Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 11th, 2012 City Commission Meeting for the City of Muskegon. We will begin with prayer by Pastor Marcy Miller from Samuel Lutheran Church, followed by the Prejudice of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give thanks for our democratic system, for our voice, and for our vote. We ask that you would especially be here with these men and women during this meeting this evening, grant them wisdom and the ability to discern and use justice when needed. And we pray that, especially in this season, that you might open our hearts to those who are less fortunate and enable us to be of help to them. All these things and whatever else you see that we need, even on the state, national, or city level, we ask for your guidance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringo. Absent. Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Markowski?
Here.
Mayor Galeran?
Here.
Commissioner Hood? Absent. Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk. Summary request: To approve minutes of the November 27th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Marshfield Management Agreement, Public Works. Summary request: Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Marshfield Baseball Facility Management Agreement with the Lake Shore Baseball Club. Staff recommendation: Approve the request. Truck-mounted jet rotor jet truck, Public Works. Summary request: Authorize staff to purchase one truck-mounted jet rotor model 800 HPR Series III Echo Sewer Equipment Company of America from Jack Donie Supplies Incorporated for $201,500. Donie was the lowest responsible bidder out of the two bids received for this piece of equipment, with the other companies being A.I.S. Equipment Company, who also submitted on a compatible piece of equipment for $204,000. This piece of equipment is used primarily for sewer main cleaning and will replace the 1999 model we currently have in service. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to purchase truck-mounted jet rotor from Jack Donie Supplies for $201,500. Request to deny and accept properties that did not sell during the tax sale for 2012 Planning Economic Development. Summary request: The County of Muskegon held two delinquent tax auctions during 2012. There were 19 properties left after the last auction. According to the state's new tax laws, the city must state that they are not interested in obtaining them; otherwise, the city will automatically receive them. From the list that was provided, the properties are all vacant lots. Community and Neighborhood Services would like to obtain two of the vacant lots. Planning would like to obtain four vacant lots, with the remaining parcels being denied. Staff recommendation: To deny 13 parcels and accept six parcels and authorize both the mayor and the clerk to sign said resolution. Approval of purchase of 1282 Fleming and sign a memorandum of understanding with Trinity Housing Nonprofit Corporation for the transfer. Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To authorize Community and Neighborhood Services office to purchase the HUD home at 1282 Fleming in the Oakview neighborhood for our partner, Trinity Village Nonprofit Housing Corporation. A memorandum of understanding will be signed to transfer the home to Trinity after closing. Trinity is the approved agent for the county's NSP-III HUD grant award. Oakview neighborhood is the target neighborhood. Staff recommendation: To approve Community and Neighborhood Services 1282 Fleming purchase and enter into a memorandum of understanding with Trinity Village Nonprofit Housing Corporation for the transfer of property. Approval of the bid proposal of BlackBerry Window and Door Systems at 1500 Leahy, Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To accept the bid from BlackBerry Window and Door Systems to restore the existing metal windows at 1500 Leahy Street, our last NSP-1 project. The proposed price for this is $33,545. Staff recommendation: To approve the Community and Neighborhood Services office to sign the contract to hire BlackBerry Window and Door Systems as required by the State of Michigan Historic Preservation Office. Fleet Vehicle Replacement, Public Works. Summary request: Authorize staff to purchase four full-size Ford F-150 4x4 pickup trucks for fleet replacement from Gornell Ford Michigan Deal, state's lowest bidder for Ford. These will replace fleet vehicles that will be handed down to various departments as seasonal vehicles. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to purchase four Ford F-150 4x4 pickups from Gornell Ford Michigan Deal. Fireworks Delegation of Authority Authorization, Public Safety. Summary request: The Director of Public Safety requests that the City Commission review and authorize the Fireworks Delegation of Authority Authorization pursuant to Public Act 256. The Bureau of Fire Services is seeking for departments that are interested in applying for inspection delegation for consumer fireworks sales facility, CFRS, under Section 19 of 2011 PA 256. The delegation is for one year. The fire department would be responsible to conduct inspections of the permanent and temporary CFRS location within its jurisdiction, City of Muskegon. Entities, the Muskegon Fire Department that elect to have delegation will receive 80% of the application fee paid for the consumer fireworks certificate, $800 for permanent and $480 for temporary. Currently, MUFD has two trained certified fire inspectors that are qualified to perform this job task. Application will be made upon the acceptance by City Commission. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends approval to perform delegation inspections.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like to have removed for further consideration? Commissioner?
I would move we accept the consent agenda as accepted.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by Vice Mayor Spataro to accept the consent agenda as accepted. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, please.
Second reading rezoning request for the property located at 137 East Lakeston Avenue, Planning Economic Development. Summary request: Request to rezon the property at 137 East Lakeston Avenue from B2 Convenience and Comparison Business District to B4 General Business District by Jack Kennedy. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends approval of the rezoning. Committee recommendation: The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request at their November 15th meeting.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the rezoning request for the property located at 137 East Lakeston Avenue to B4 General Business District.
Do I hear a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Spataro, seconded by Commissioner Markowski, to recommend approval of the request for the rezoning of property located at 137 East Lakeston Avenue. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 451 East Isabella, Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To approve the resolution and instruct the Community and Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Mr. Joseph R. Keef for the totally rehabilitated home at 451 East Isabella. Mr. Keef will purchase it for $37,500. This is a property that was under the lease with option-to-buy program five years ago. Staff recommendation: To approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the sale of the property at 451 East Isabella.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the sale of the city-owned home at 451 East Isabella. Any discussion?
Is our buyer here? I don't want to have him come all this way out and not recognize him. No?
Unless you have anything else to add, Anita?
Thank you for asking, but our buyers were not asked to come to this meeting. We were trying to push it along in the event that we are able to close before the 31st of December, and so it didn't quite work with either of their schedules. So, they would like to come back if that would be okay.
Well, bring them on in, absolutely.
To meet you just before their close. So, I thank you for listening to me.
There's nothing else? Roll call, please, on 451 East Isabella.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item B, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 605 Jackson, Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To approve the resolution and instruct the Community and Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Madra Bolden for the newly constructed home at 605 Jackson, which is part of the city's neighborhood stabilization program through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, Office of Community Development and Leverage Funds, with the home program by HUD. Ms. Bolden is expected to receive a VA loan for $65,000. Staff recommendation: To approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the sale of city-owned home at 605 Jackson to Ms. Bolden for the price stated.
Second?
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Spataro, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the resolution and direct CNS staff to complete the sale at 605 Jackson. Any discussion?
I just had a question because it wasn't clarified in the statement. Is the price of the property $65,000, which states she's receiving a loan for that amount?
It's $65,000.
Anything else? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I guess we skip to item D because item C has been removed.
Appointment to County of Muskegon Port Advisory Committee Manager, City Manager. Summary request: The County of Muskegon has established the Port Advisory Committee. The bylaws of the committee call for a member from the City of Muskegon. It is requested that the city manager serve as the city's representative on this committee. Staff recommendation: To appoint the city manager as the city's designee to the Muskegon County Port Advisory Committee.
Do I have a motion? Commissioner German?
A motion to appoint to the County of Muskegon Port Advisory Committee, City Manager?
I'll second that.
It has been moved by Commissioner German and seconded by Vice Mayor Spataro to appoint the city manager as the city's designee to the Muskegon County Port Advisory Committee. Do you have time?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I have one question. I read through there a couple of times that the motion says that they requested the city manager to be the member, yet I didn't read that in the thing. So, who decided that to be?
I'm not sure who decided that to be, but the materials that I received actually had my personal name on it. As if you look in the makeup of the membership, and it says the City of Muskegon, the materials I received, which was duplicate of these materials, actually had my name written in them.
Any other discussion or questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just think that we should address that because I was a little troubled that it appeared that we were being told who to appoint. But when I did a little lecture digging, this is going to be a fairly technically-oriented committee, and it does make sense to have a staff person, whether it be the manager or the Director of Economic Development, or someone at that level representing the city there, because it does appear that there's going to be a need for technical knowledge that really is kind of out of the scope of what most of us as elected officials would have. Certainly, it means at an hour I could not be there, and I don't know about anybody else, but I would suspect it would be problematic because only during the business day. So, it would make sense to me that it'd be the manager.
Okay. Any other questions or input? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E.
Wheel loader, Public Works. Summary request: Authorize staff to purchase one CAT 930K wheel loader from Michigan CAT for $160,848 minus the trade-in value of $37,000 for our CASE 521D for a net purchase price of $123,848. This price is off of the state website, Michigan Deal. This will replace the trade-in machine, which is a 2001. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to purchase CAT 930K wheel loader for $123,848 after trade-in.
Thank you. I would move that we approve the purchase of the CAT 930K wheel loader for $123,848 after the trade-in.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor and supported by Commissioner Markowski to authorize staff to purchase the CAT 930K wheel loader for $123,848 after trade-in. Any discussion or comments?
Question, Mayor. Okay, exactly. What is a CAT 930K wheel loader? Could someone explain that to me?
Do we have the CAT loader explainer? Good evening, Mr. Buckingham.
Good evening, Mayor. A 930K wheel loader is a, probably a 12-ton machine. It's got wheels. What we use in the yards to load all our salt trucks, to load our lead, to disperse of all of our yard waste. We use it to unload trucks when they come in, to unload sewer main, water main. There's forks that attach to the front of it in a three-yard bucket.
How old is the one that you're trading in?
It's a 2001.
2001. So, lifespan on those are what?
Well, we have a lifespan of it and a price range that when it goes out is a 10-year replacement value. That's how it's charged out. This machine probably replaced a little more often than any other because it's running in salt. It really gets abused.
Thank you.
Say add Karen for me. Any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, please.
User fees financed. Summary request: City departments have reviewed and updated their user fees, and these have been incorporated into the master fee resolution for your consideration. The new fees and fee changes that are being proposed include the following: Eliminate the current cleaning deposit for picnic shelter rentals and replacing it with a cleaning fee to be imposed if facility is not left in clean condition. New fee for vacant building administrative appeals that are late. Reducing Hart Shore Marina slip rentals to hopefully increase the number of rentals. Increase catamaran storage fees that have not changed in several years. Increase storm-water cross-connection fees reflecting higher wastewater treatment costs. Replacing current planned unit development processing fee with separate fees for preliminary and final HUD processing. Staff recommendation: Approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the new fees and fee charges that are being proposed? Vice Mayor?
Your Honor, I would move that we adopt the proposed fee changes to the fee schedule.
Support.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor and supported by Commissioner Turnquist to approve the new fees and fees changes as being proposed. Are there any questions for staff while we have them?
The first one, we currently get a cleaning deposit for a picnic shelter, and that's returned if the shelter is clean. Now, we're saying we're not going to get it up front, but we will charge the people if they don't clean it. Doesn't that make it a little bit more difficult?
Yes, in a way, but it also, the problem with the deposits is people like to reserve their spots months and months in advance, so we end up holding on to $50 deposit checks or credit card payments, and it's an administrative problem to get that stuff processed over time. We think we'll try this, we like to try it this way, have people authorize the charge if they don't leave it in the proper condition, and we'll charge their credit card or go after them. But basically, it's a, we spend more time tracking these things for nine months or more sometimes because people want to reserve their spot so much in advance, and it's a lot of paperwork for staff.
Any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item G.
Melching lawsuit, City Manager.
At your work session last night, the city attorney went over a memorandum that was prepared for you as a result of a request by the mayor at the first meeting in November. And at the meeting last night, after discussion and, well, after discussion, it was determined that you would consider the memorandum and the options that were laid out in that memo and then come back tonight to give some direction to city staff as to how to proceed with the lawsuit that has been filed by Melching Incorporated versus the City of Muskegon.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. At least in order for us to begin discussion, and I know there are members of the public who wish to speak to this topic, I would move that we file notice that we do not intend to defend the suit and that we direct city staff and the city attorney to negotiate a settlement with the litigant.
Do I have a second so that we can get this on the floor for discussion?
Support.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Turnquist. That we select our response as 1A, the city can agree with Melching's position that the industry petition vote has no legal binding effect. Discussion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I think we understand, based on the vote that was taken, how people feel, and whether people who come here week after week believe us or not, we aren't all that far apart as far as the outcome that we're all trying to achieve. However, spending money that we don't have on a lawsuit, which on the face of it, based on our legal advice and my own research on the matter, it really is not defensible in a meaningful way, does not seem particularly practical to me, given our budget situation. So, to me, this would address the issue of the lawsuit and allow us to go back to negotiating a change of use for that site, which is what the process we were involved in was before because no one in this community wants to see heavy industry on the lake. And I, speaking for myself and based on our conversations on this issue over the past over a year now, I don't believe there's anybody on this dais or at City Hall who wants to see heavy industry on the lake. And that's what we're trying to negotiate with the property owner. By responding as opposed to waiting for a default judgment, I believe this would allow other interested parties, whether for the plaintiff or defense, to file an amicus debrief and ask to be made a party to the suit if they so choose. So, that avenue is open. So, I think that this, in the limited ranges of options that are actually available to us, allows us to respond, allows us to negotiate a settlement in line with what the wishes of people have been demonstrated through the voting process while respecting the fact that we have limited resources with which to fight a lawsuit that our risk management agency has indicated they will not cover through our insurance, and we will be paying the full cost for that litigation. Thank you, Your Honor.
Just to make sure, now, we're supporting, we had two options, A and B. We're supporting A.
Correct.
I think that the work that Mr. Page and his group have done, Occupy Muskegon, and other groups, has really, you know, raised it that Mr. Melching has to receive a message. I am not one to believe that by vote we can change the zoning of a person's property. That's just the way I feel. He has been quoted often that he is talking about mixed usage, other ways of using it. I don't think, I'm still optimistic enough that once all the rubble is out of there and we're getting impatient on that, and when it looks better, it's going to market, be more marketable to those who may have some interest in the property. Right now, every day when you drive by, even though I think it's an improvement from the old buildings being down, you get tired of looking at the piles, and as one lady said last night, it's undesirable to see that and what's happened to the people there. And that's something that we can't answer, I can't answer. I do feel that we as a city, our administration, needs to be more actively involved, and I'm saying this without complete knowledge, of meeting with Mr. Melching and his people more often and get updates from him. Right now, I just seem that, I feel that he's kind of walked away from the situation. We haven't seen him. I tried to see him two or three weeks ago, and he had no interest. But I think we have to build that relationship to get that property to become what we really want it. We want some public access to that property, but we as city people also want to see income. Marine waterfront could supply that. There's one thing in the marine waterfront, correct me, Tim, would involve heavy boat repair and that type of thing, so we wouldn't be getting away from all of the noise and the congestion and everything. And I think these things have to be worked out through the city, and I think we have to build up that relationship with him and on a regular basis. Many, there's big concern about the pollution and the water, the wells and everything else. Again, I think he is committed, and he has been working with the DEQ, and I have to take that at his word that that's happening. And I don't think that the DEQ is going to allow groundwater or contaminants to go into the lake, which is our major concern. Another concern is people have complained about particles and dust and everything, causing them to have nasal problems and so forth. That could well be, I'm not denying that. But I just think that we have to let this thing take his course. He's not been successful in marketing that property for what we saw the first plan being. But I think it has so much potential to provide both for us that I would agree that this is the way to go. Any other input from commissioners?
I have two requests that I will recognize prior to voting on this. Mr. Bill Larson?
Bill Larson, 1555 Randolph in Glenside. It didn't surprise me that Larry made that motion. And from what I've seen is you're being bludgeoned with this idea that it's all about money. It's not all about money, it's to do the right thing. The other thing is, that I find interesting, that there, two commissioners didn't even feel necessary to, to show up at a meeting of this importance, and that bothers me also.
One is out of town for a child's wedding.
I read through this thing four or five times today, and to me, B was the, the way to go about it. And I'm surprised that, that this motion is even being made. The funny thing is, is when we vote tonight, when you folks vote, it's going to be on the most number of votes. When you were elected, you were elected on the biggest number of votes to be elected. We have the most number of votes, and you choose to ignore it, to me, is, is the sad commentary on all the work that the people did and the message that they tried to send. And I thank you for letting me have this time to speak.
Thank you, Bill. Larry Page?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Larry Page. I live at 3328 Wilcox Avenue in the Bluffton neighborhood. Mr. Spataro's motion is interesting. One part of me says, that's a pretty good idea, Mr. Spataro. It doesn't spend any money of the city, and I know you're concerned about the finances. And I would be part, be willing to be part of that, if along with that motion, went a motion that said that we would then, that would take care of the, of the lawsuit issue, if we went to Part A of the, of the motion, of the movement after the petition, and we directed the city to take the steps, to take this process through the zoning process. That's what I asked for from the first day that I approached this dais. I asked the city commission to, please, let's take this through the process, let's get this rezoned, it's an important issue. Didn't get any response. I told the city commission, and I want to, this sort of gets at a statement that our attorney made, and was in the, in the minutes, that this started out as an initiatory or as an advisory petition, and ended up after the, the vote, to be more of a, this is what we want, a legal petition. I drafted that petition, I had that petition drafted, I'm not going to take credit for the, for the wording, but I had that petition drafted. And at no point in time did I think of this as an advisory-only petition. That was never in my mind. It said that proponents talked about it as being advisory commission. I've been here at almost every meeting, I never heard anybody speak of it as, this is an advisory petition. This petition, to me, was drafted to carry the full force of law, and I mentioned that the last time I spoke to you folks. This was never intended to be an advisory petition. There was an advisory petition that was presented to the city commission and the mayor. This is a separate petition from that. This initiatory petition was there to, to put it on the ballot and to let the people vote, and so that the commission would there, would then take the direction of the people and take whatever steps are necessary to bring it to its fruition, which is a change of zoning, as the petition said, as 6,901 people voted, to change this zoning map from I-2 to waterfront marine. It was very clear. I like to think it's one of the few, it's the only one that passed because it was very clear. And no place did it say, "We wish that you would consider, we hope that you would think about," or that. Shall it be considered, changed, is, is the wording. So, Mr. Spataro, I would, you know, and not that you need my second, but I would support your motion, if along with that motion, you would amend that motion and say, and direct the city, the city to take the steps necessary to rezone this property. Let's bring it through the process. I have no problem with that. I'd like to see how the various players in that process would vote, yea or nay on this, right? So, let's go with it. Let's take it through the process. I said that before, I said that day one, let's take it through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak? I mean, who signed out?
No.
Okay. A couple of issues were raised that I think should be addressed, and certainly we're all voter conscience here. One, this is not the first initiatory petition in which I've been involved as either a resident of the city, as an active participant, or as an elected member of this commission. And sometimes when we have a referendum on an issue, and what comes to mind initially is the referendum regarding a casino. We had a vote on that, there was a majority of the voters of the City of Muskegon who were in favor of that. We took the steps within our power as a city commission to facilitate their wishes. But state and federal law do not give us the final say in that matter. And we don't have a casino. I neither just report, or anybody else who's trying to get a casino in Michigan, because it's not just a local issue. Now, with this particular initiative, the wishes of the people have been made clear. Now, we can fight a lawsuit and potentially lose and spend, and just filing this is going to cost significant amounts of money. I mean, people don't, just this motion is not free for us to do. There is no free option, once that lawsuit was filed. Sometimes I think there's this, this notion that these things don't cost money, and that that doesn't take resources away from keeping a park up or paying for a police officer or something. But there is more than one way to address a zoning issue. One way would be for us to go the staff-initiated process, and go through an involuntary process, and end up with a legal non-conforming use and an angry property owner who might do something he can legally do under state law, regardless of what the zoning may be changed to, that none of us in this community like. Or, we can pursue what we have been pursuing, which is a negotiated zone change with this property owner, so that at the end of the day, that is a cooperative result, something that he has indicated to us at the planning commission, to individual commissioners, and to city staff, that he is willing to do. And that, that is the way to achieve the rezoning that the people have requested of us, that is not confrontational, and is more likely to have a successful outcome. So, my motion is not inconsistent with that vote, in the sense that we would pursue and continue to pursue a negotiated, whether it be a planned unit development, or ultimately a straight-up zone change, with the cooperation of this property owner, so that we don't end up in a situation where he puts something on that site that no one here wants, which legally, right now, he could do, even if that zoning had been changed back in 2009. So, that's why I made the motion that I did, and that's why I do believe it is consistent with the message we received from the voters of this community in last month's election. Thank you, Ron.
Vice Mayor.
May I ask a question of Mr. Page?
Go ahead.
You talked about wording in the item A, it was amended, and Mr. Spataro talked about a negotiated conclusion. Is that what you're looking for? You're looking for something stronger than that? Can we do that through the planning commission? What, what's your feelings on that, sir?
Well, speaking from one of 6,901 votes, I'm the one. I'm only speaking to myself, not speaking for this group because I can't.
But I think you're representative of that group.
The ballot initiative said it should be changed, right? People said, yes, it should be changed, right? The process, the, the way that it's changed was not stipulated, right? One way that I see that it could be changed is to take it through the process, through, direct the city staff and that whole zoning change process. That's one way that could be done. That's the way that would be the most transparent, if you will. We would have public meetings, we would have, we'd have notification of people that live near there, we would know when meetings are going to be made, we could come and speak, and we'd have voices heard. Negotiating with Mr. Melching, well, while it may be that it might be successful, it's certainly not transparent. And that's the concern of a lot of people that I've talked to, that very little is transparent. Let me give you an example. Last, and I've asked, I'm one of those people that have, over and over, asked for, why wasn't this zoning changed back in August of 2009? Never have I gotten any response or any good answer to that. Last night, I started to hear, well, it wouldn't make any difference if we changed it back in 2009, then SC Warren would sue us. If we change it now, then Melching might sue us. That tells me that we can never change this zoning, right? The city, I've heard it from the commission, I've heard it from staff, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't, right? We can't change this zoning. Until we can find somebody, some denervated property owner in, at some point down the road, that'll be willing to make, to let us, to give, to, he will give us his blessing to change the zoning. Well, I think that's happened too much in the City of Muskegon. I think that we've, we've put our fortunes in the, with people that have come into our city and basically told us how to run our, run things, right? And I think that 6,901 people are tired of that and said, let's take control of the city, let's us do it the way we want to do it, and if that generates some unpleasantries, so be it. But, given that, I'm certainly not, I'm certainly open, as a person, to any, any proposal that would do what the, what the zoning ordinance asked for, and that is to change the, to change the zoning, right? However, I would like that, I would like to see that process be a little bit more transparent, excuse me, a lot more transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Do you get a feel for that, then?
You know, I've asked back and forth, whether this would be enforced or whether it wouldn't be enforced, and the answer is, you really don't know. Depends a lot on who's going to hear the case. Is that correct, Mr. Squires? Now, this circuit court that, that's handling this in, what, the next three or four weeks, that person has the option of saying this petition is valid? If we fight the lawsuit, if we pursue a lawsuit?
Excuse me.
Which is not the motion.
Right.
Could I clarify something that Mr. Page says before we get too far along? A negotiated settlement to this, while it would be negotiated, that result, whether it be a planned unit development, a contract zoning, or a flat-out zone change, would not be opaque, it would be transparent, because that result would have to go to our planning commission with a public hearing, and a notice to the neighborhood association and adjacent property owners, as would any other zone change, where it would be debated as to whether or not that negotiated outcome was acceptable. If the planning commission voted to adopt that change and make that recommendation, that would come to the city commission, where there would be at least one other meeting like this, where that issue would be subject to open debate and public comment, and a vote by this body. So, while it, it may, I mean, I just want to make sure that there's not a misunderstanding, that the motion is, is worded. Ultimately, this will end up before the public, the planning commission, at a public hearing, with all the stakeholders notified, so that they can comment on the results of that negotiated zone change. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Squire.
No, that's my.
Thank you.
My question is, I'm listening to the citizens of the City of Muskegon, they have spoken. As the gentleman stated, that it was 6,901 votes that the City of Muskegon want to see this area zoned. Although I respect the fact that, as a business owner, Mr. Melching is a business owner, and he wants to get his investment, but we do want to see some type of development on that part. Now, I'm, I'm looking at, on the floor, if we have option A, correct? Okay. So, now, what are the chances, and this is for legal counsel, if we did turn down option A and then took it to court for litigation, what are our chances of winning? I mean, do you see a very strong chance? Because the reason I'm asking is, is more or less looking like, okay, we're not listening to the public, we're kind of, just kind of folding our legs, you know, sitting down and not fighting.
Commissioner, I'm, I am always reluctant to try and predict outcomes on litigation. I am particularly uncomfortable doing that in a public setting.
Okay.
Where the judge is potentially going to hear my answer.
Okay. Okay. I can respect that.
Can we request, I'm sorry to you guys, but can we request a last call for public comment? I think there are some people that we're not able to get here at our 5:30 deadline, and might have some additional input, and I think we, if it's all right with you, I would like to request they get one last chance to put in their sheet and have their voices be heard.
I'd like to take a few more minutes to discuss it amongst ourselves. This issue has been debated.
The reason I say that is because we have, this information was provided to the public just as of yesterday, and so there, as I mentioned, there are some members who are joining us who just weren't able to get here in time to submit their paperwork.
As, as I, I take the Vice Mayor's point, and, you know, I understand it from the point of limiting our exposure, as well as, you know, hopefully positioning ourselves for a negotiated settlement. But I've, from the beginning, I've looked at and still gravitate towards option C, which is the city litigating, and then encouraging the proponents of the initiatory petition to join in the litigation. I think that gives an opportunity to take this through a clear, legal process, which then, you know, binds all parties. then, you know, binds all parties. I think it ends, would end up lending a level of clarity and finality where then we can, you know, move on. That's my gut feeling on that one. I've discussed it, you know, briefly with the Vice Mayor. I've gravitated to that position. That's probably where I'm at right at this point, and I still think that that's the option that I'm focusing on, as well as last night when I asked council if, you know, down the road Sappi could come in on the process at some juncture. I think that gives an opportunity then for all parties to have the issue addressed, you know, to them and hold them and, you know, deal with the multiple issues. My gut feeling. Commissioner.
Well, and then another option that's been thrown out there is...
Did you talk to the mic?
The mics are on. So the option was presented of A, suggested to append A to A, meaning directing staff to begin zoning change processes internally. Should we go with A option? So my then question would be, that doesn't provide us with any type of, if we went with negotiation instead, it doesn't really give us a timeline that gives us, well, we'll negotiate and negotiate until when. And so my question is, I feel that we need a timeline that we can all be held accountable to, and as well Mr. Melching. I know that he has been participatory in many conversations with both interested parties of the public as well as the city, but since I've been here, he has not, been nowhere to be found. I've never met the man. And I just feel that if he is truly going to be a partner in this, he needs to be held accountable in a way that we can keep track of. And I think that having some kind of timeline, whether it's suggesting a negotiation, and if we don't come to some agreement within a specified period of time, we initiate his own change process. I'm just throwing out there that, to me, a timeline is very important because I don't want this to drag on to eternity.
And while I know people, you know, have their positions and their opinions of the man, you know, let's remember that first and foremost, the issue had been the, any of the environmental issues, and we all went full force, you know, into that. The DEQ has been very engaged and remains engaged, and I believe that those environmental issues are being heavily, heavily addressed. Now, as far as what people want to see, as far as what people think we should have done in 2009, again, when it comes to, you know, whether or not the legal non-conforming use, you know, remains, and the existing use of heavy industry, you know, could go on regardless.
I think that's the case forever, though.
Right, and that would be the case forever.
Regardless of the zone change.
But I think Mr. Melching, in his own manner, you know, had been forthcoming from the beginning and even making outreach to, you know, Neighborhood Association and to the public. But let's remember too, and I think this gets lost, I know what the public wants, all right? But we're talking about a property owner here, just like many property owners out here. And just like a property owner last night said, gee, whatever you do, I hope it doesn't turn it around where somebody could just come in and want to rezone my property because it's on the lake and put up a high-rise resort. Property rights are involved here, and I think that gets lost regardless, and we have to be cognizant of that as well. But now we have a lawsuit.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. One of the things that has really frustrated me about this whole process is, I think, an unrealistic expectation on how long these kind of large development projects take. When Mr. Melching took title to that property, whether it was him or any other owner, best-case scenario in my mind, based on experience with other projects, not just here, but around the state that I've kept tabs on so I could learn more about these issues over the years, I was assuming that best-case scenario, this was a three- to five-year window before the property would be ready for somebody to turn the first shovel full of dirt on a new development. It, you know, I look at it, it took nearly two years to demolish the mall. This is a more complicated project than demolishing the mall, which of course is not being actually demolished, it's being recycled, which actually is a very green thing to do. There's probably at least another year worth of demolition to go before the site's cleared. The DEQ has told us that they've got probably two years' worth of work before they sign off on closing out their issues. So that means we're looking at probably at least another year of demolition, and another year after that before the site is actually available for any new project to be put on it. I agree that an open-ended timeframe is inappropriate, but I do think that we need, and members of the public need to understand, that we're talking years with large issues like this, with a huge factory and a large piece of property. We're not talking about weeks or months. And I think that's contributed to the level of frustration that people have felt, because the process does move slowly because of those issues. We heard that again last night where people were saying, well, it's an eyesore. Well, it's going to be an eyesore for a while. It just takes a certain amount of time to take out something that big and that complex in a responsible way. And unfortunately, just like with the mall, with the folks downtown, while that's going through that process, it's unsightly and unpleasant to be around. But we have to get through that process in order to move forward. And so one of the things that I hope is that if we make sure that any litigation is reasonably short, we're not delaying that process, that we can, you know, the message has certainly been received here on this medias. I think Mr. Melchi, being an intelligent man, has heard that message as well, and that, you know, before that property is ready for what comes next, that we will certainly have something before the Planning Commission for public scrutiny and for approval by that body, and whoever may be on this body at that point.
So in the interest, though, of a potential, I don't want to call it an acceleration, is there a benefit to the litigation because then we, is there some type of level of certainty that could be achieved? The court rules and says, this is what it's all about, this is what we're looking at, and, you know, get us in a position to move beyond the litigation afterwards with a clear, you know, ruling as to what's before us?
If the court were to rule that the initiatory petition is binding, the zone would be changed to waterfront marine.
There we have it.
Yep. There's no reason to, for the Planning Commission to meet, there's no reason for this body to vote. That would be the court's order. On the flip side, if the court would rule that this is not a proper means of amending the zoning ordinance, then the staff and Planning Commission and City Commission would be back in the process of looking at possible rezoning options.
Commissioners, any further discussion?
I guess just one last question. We know that a negotiated settlement would take probably weeks or longer. Best estimate on your experience?
Can I clarify your question? A negotiated settlement relative to a zone change?
Yeah.
Okay.
We know that that probably much longer than that. I mean, to actually do the zone change, we might be able to dispose of the lawsuit, but the zone change itself is probably going to take quite a bit longer. So we know, have, at least, I think there's probably an idea of what that timeframe might be. If we went through Proposal C, as been discussed, what is a reasonable expectation on when we might have a court rule?
I've indicated that I would expect we would be able to, that we would have a decision from the court probably late spring, early summer, and I say that based upon, I do not think this is a case that will require any types of typical discovery types of things, depositions, interrogatory questions, written questions, et cetera. I would expect that this issue could be brought before the court, excuse me, relatively soon, and I would expect that the court will be able to rule late spring, early summer.
So, okay, three to six months, maybe a little longer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The other benefit I see to see is that we're faced with this initiative. This may not be the only initiative that this body or future bodies face. I think we can get a reasonable reading of what the legal realities then would be, and we'd be in a position to know what we're dealing with down the road. Again, my two cents.
Vice Mayor.
It seems to me we're heading to consensus, and of course, having a motion on the floor is important because what else are you talking about once you have a motion? So seeing where we're moving, I would withdraw my motion.
Do I have a second?
I would withdraw the second. I would move that we pursue Option C, which would be to litigate this matter and invite interested parties to file amicus briefs if they choose.
Intervention.
Intervention, I'm sorry.
Intervention. Is there a second?
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Markowski, to choose Option C to litigate the issue, and the city would encourage the proponents of the initiatory petition to join the litigation. Is there any discussion?
My discussion would simply be that I think at all points from here moving forward, we need to make sure that we are informing Mr. Melching and anybody who is working with him that our desires as the city, as I assume the most of the citizenry, is to have a piece of property that we can all work with himself, as well as citizens, and that we are very interested in mediation at any point in time.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Markowski, yes. Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item H, senior transit. Last night, we had a long discussion regarding the senior transit in lieu of the history of its being eliminated, going over the city finances last night, coming up with potential options to go on down the road. But that being said, in order for further discussion, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I would move to extend the senior transportation service through the fiscal year 2012, 2013, ending in June of 2013.
It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by Commissioner German to extend and fund the senior transit program for fiscal year 2012 through 2013, and the program ending the end of the fiscal year. Discussion.
Well, I, you know, some things you just don't get the answers by looking at the numbers. I think we've been very fortunate as a city this year. We approved a budget for 2012, 2013 that included a $575,000 draw from our reserve fund. Through the fine efforts of the city, the city department heads, people in this room, our most recent projection on that is it's going to be $214,000 and not 575. And again, maybe not as strongly as the rezoning, but the senior citizens did vote for it, the citizens voted for it, not by, you know, maybe 52, 53, 54 percent majority. But this is something not necessarily from the head, sometimes from the heart. Heard all the arguments that lose this, lose that, nobody else does it. Well, if we do it, that makes us a little bit special, a little bit better than other cities. And I think this is something that is not going to hurt us.
But it will end in June of this, coming year.
Unless some people come forward, or, you know, we've talked and heard some talk about fundraisers, but yes, it would end in June 2013.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. One of the most difficult parts of representing the people of Third Ward over the last 13 years is the fact that after, well, really almost from the get-go, the state economy took a dive starting in 2000, right when I was getting elected, and our revenue stream started to shrink by 2002. I've only been on the commission one budget year where we actually had a surplus of revenue based on the beginning of the year projection. We have been in balanced budgets and surplus budgets because of very strict financial discipline and painful cuts. Every program that we have had was important to somebody, whether it was the grants we used to be able to provide to the Little League that we had to cut, the support we used to provide to maintain the road commission's property at the Causeway that we could not afford to maintain anymore and then had to alter that agreement to fix our revenue, changing the contract with the arena to fix our loss or face closing the arena entirely, eliminating directly operating the basketball program or maintaining the lifeguards at the beach or the park rangers or the summer adventure program, which I know generates, and many people in this room may have fond memories of participating in that or similar city programs when they were kids. These were not easy decisions. Those programs did good things, and they were important to a lot of people. Right now, I see the budget, I looked over those numbers again last night, as we were told to sleep on things, to make these decisions today, and I see that we have a $215,000 projected budget shortfall. That means we're spending $215,000 more than what we take in this year. I see that our income tax money, year over year, is down not quite one percentage point. I see that the state legislature just passed a bill that would eliminate the personal property tax and only replace 80 percent of it, and the personal property tax makes up 20 percent of our general fund budget. I don't like those numbers. I get tired of talking about those numbers. Somebody last night mentioned they get tired of hearing those numbers. They're not nearly so tired of hearing those numbers as I am of looking at them and dealing with that reality because it means I can't do fund things up here. It means I can't come up with some cool new initiative and have it funded. It means I can't do something good... It means I can't do something good for a constituent who deserves it because it's a worthwhile program or initiative. It means instead I'm looking at employees and saying, "I'm sorry, there's not a job here for you at City Hall anymore. If you're lucky, this private company might be able to employ you." It means I look at employees and say, "I'm sorry, you will no longer be able to retire with dignity like I will, because we can't afford to maintain a defined benefit pension anymore. We had to switch all our employees to a defined contribution pension system nearly a decade ago." It means I have to look constituents in the eye when I go out to neighborhood association meetings and say, "I hear your frustration when your neighbor is not taking care of their property. I feel the same way. We have three people doing what eight people used to do. I will make sure it gets on their work list." I don't like having to do that. But that's part of what I said I would be willing to do when I asked the people who live in the Third Ward of this city to elect me to represent them on this body and speak on their behalf. I know this program benefits, at this point, 160 people, and for a full year costs nearly That's what was in the budget. I know that there are near, well, approximately 15 other transportation programs. None of them as convenient, surely. Some of them have restrictions or fees that are more expensive. I, I, I understand that. I know that our drivers have been doing things that are outside what they're paid to do that exposes us to liability, and quite honestly, either we need to enforce our work rules or change our insurance, because it's a matter of time before we have an expensive liability And so when I look at this and say, "Okay, we might take another $30,000 or $40,000 out of our money that we are going to need to maintain basic services as we take this hit in our property tax, as we take this hit in our personal property tax, as we see relatively flat income tax dollars, and get through another six months," what then? What then? To me, it makes sense to be honest with people and say, "This is not going to continue forward indefinitely. We said that there was six months." You know, people can say that they didn't understand. I accept that. But when I read those proposals, as the clerk provided us copies once again, Proposal Two clearly said you have to vote yes on Proposal Three for it to take effect. That seems pretty clear to me. So I cannot support this motion as it's worded. I think last night we had ample discussion to suggest some possible alternatives, and I would be willing to look at some of those possible alternatives. But I think it does not serve the people being served by this program, and I don't think it's budget, it's financially responsible for us to say, "This isn't an important amount of money." It is. $30,000 or $40,000 is a lot of money. In the context of our overall budget, you start making some decisions like that, and you get into real trouble real fast. So I think we need to, to say, "I'm sorry, we cannot continue the program as it's been." And then I would welcome discussion, based on our conversation last night, on some of the potential alternatives that may be available to people, and if there is funding available from us, something that would be sustainable going forward within our financial reality. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Any other comment or input? Commissioner?
Just like to say, I'm in favor of supporting this, and I, I look at the dollars that we spent on equipment, things to make this city run efficiently. And although I do agree with the Vice Mayor, there are some budget constraints, and we need to really be cognitive of, you know, what we're dealing with. And I respect the fact that the citizens came out to force their opinions and vote on a proposal to get a bill to support this transit service. Just over the last few months, I've had several phone calls. I've seen senior citizens come in this commission meeting on walkers, forcing their opinions and expressing how important this service is to them. And I, I know we have the funding, and yes, we're looking, you know, and projecting, forecasting what may happen, you know, later down the line, but, you know, we have a now situation where we can actually help our senior citizens. And I think we should take the courage and fortitude to do this right now. Same, same, looking at, all these citizens, all these senior citizens are asking for just a little help. I mean, to get to the store, to get, make groceries, to get to their doctor's appointments, to pick up their prescription drugs, and to get them through 2013, this winter. We have no idea what this winter may be like. But on the flip side of that, when we have businesses, and that we're a business-friendly city, and a, a business come to this, our commission, and we give them tax incentives because they want help, okay? What's wrong with giving our senior citizens help? Okay? Why can't we be more senior citizens friendly? So I feel and encourage my fellow commissioners to look at this and not let's play politics and hold these senior citizens hostage due to the fact that we're forecasting ahead, but let's look at the situation now. And if something comes up, you know, later where we can't do this, maybe, you know, there may be some service or some consolidation with, you know, another, you know, service that could help them. But I think we should stand and go forward and just go ahead and support this. That's my take on that.
You brought up the point of, you know, the tax abatements for business. Remember, we don't, we don't give them money, okay? We're actually getting money, just at a reduced rate.
Yeah.
So that we can hopefully pay for the programs that we do have. So you're talking about, you know, projections, or you're talking about what may be. Well, we're already at what may be. You know, we're already living in that. We've been living in a, you know, a deficit, you know, spending for the past year. And it hasn't been the first year either. And it's not, it's not a matter of playing politics. It's a matter of standing up for our fiduciary responsibility for all 39,000 citizens. And I went into it ad nauseam last night with, you know, running down what we have, experience what we will be. But I, I respect your, your position, but by no means are the, are the individuals who don't share the same opinion merely playing, you know, politics and ignoring anybody. I disagree with you there, Commissioner. Commissioner Markowski, did you have anything?
Mostly, I, I want to know where folks stand on their thoughts of what alternatives we might be able to provide. I certainly have noted that this is something that many residents are in need of. Okay, so that's frankly where I stand right now, that residents need access to transportation for non-medical reasons, and they need it in a somewhat timely manner, meaning that they don't have to schedule whether or not they're going to get groceries three weeks in advance. So that's where I am at the moment. What I'm looking to do is to see if we can possibly bridge the gap between our fiduciary needs and our citizen needs, and to see if there's any interest in altering the program, in changing the way that we fund it, or in doing something that might get us somewhere closer to where we want to be. So last night, what I suggested is that we pursue an agreement with a, a company who's already in the business of providing those services. And I say that because I don't think we need to be in any more businesses than we need to be, because we need to be good at the businesses that we do, and we need to focus as much attention as we can on the services that we provide, that we provide employees for. And so I'm asking if it's possible to, to alter this program, to see if we can use volunteers. I know that that's probably not going to be well received from the volunteer standpoint, whether or not we'll be able to sustain it. But that, that is an option that had been put on the table. Also, possibly changing our timeline so that it is not an on-demand service, but that there is a shorter window, I'm sorry, a longer window, so requiring at least 24 hours notice before folks could be picked up, and to get them ready to eventually, because I don't see the situation changing, but eventually going to another service. I think the possibility of changing our service in some means between now and June, and in between, working on an agreement with someone who could take it over, would be an amenable solution, and I'm wondering what the rest of you think of that.
Well, we had taken much of that time discussing this, including those options, and closing those windows and upping the fee, et cetera, back during the budget process prior to your coming onto the commission. There's always that possibility. The only thing is, is with things being what they are, then how much are you willing to put this project, you know, into staff hands?
Certainly.
At a point where, you know, our offices are, are strapped?
What I'm suggesting still does require funding. I mean, partnering with an organization is not just saying, you know, here you do this. It is us creating a more grant-like system, but very similar to what we did with leisure services, which is we, we didn't have the capacity to staff a department, but we did feel the need to provide a service to children. And, you know, my son participated in that program this summer, and I, I found it to be very well-run and something that was successful. And it might not have been the glory of what it used to be. He used to attend swim lessons that are no longer offered. But I think there is the capacity to change what we're doing and still provide a service. So I guess my suggestion would be that we direct staff to see if we can negotiate a lower rate with a business who's already doing the same thing we were doing and eliminate the duplication of services.
At this point, what we need to do now is address the motion that's on the floor and the realities of, if it, if it passes as it is, it does end at the end of this fiscal year. Are we going to be continually back here revisiting it because of whatever reasons?
And my suggestion is...
Or, or do we call it an end? We said that it was going to be an end if the vote, you know, failed. It, of course, it's a liberty program, but it was determined last year that we couldn't, or this summer, that we couldn't maintain it. And I, I'm not so sure that we can afford the staff time at this juncture to give them another huge project, but that's just my reaction at this, at this point. Vice Mayor?
Well, I certainly understand where you're coming from with that, but like Commissioner Markowski, I, I do think, particularly in light of, we did ask for some ideas to come, and one of the speakers who, who came before us last night did provide some information with a public-private partnership that, in a fairly short period of time, phases out the public funding part of that public-private partnership. And certainly the work that Commissioner Markowski has done to see if there are available local partners may make it worthwhile to explore that possibility in a time-limited way. And that I would rather see us, instead of just kicking the can down the road six months and then being here right again with whatever the numbers are at that time, that we perhaps vote this motion down and then direct staff to spend perhaps six weeks to eight weeks to see if we can negotiate a public-private partnership at a reduced cost and bring that back to us and extend the program for that period of time so that we can have a hand on. If that's not what other people want to do, but I think, you know, the issue is, do we do something like that now? Do we do it in six months from now? Because the fact is, is that we will be making cuts in our next budget. I don't think anybody who looks at those numbers and who's being honest with themselves, no matter how courageous they may be, can look at that and say, "We're not going to be making cuts." And so we might feel good doing the right thing right now, but the fact is, we're just increasing the amount of paying, and we're kicking the can down the road and spending money that we don't have to spend. We're taking it out of a finite resource that's going to disappear if we continue to spend deficit year after year. So I think there is an alternative here to help our seniors. I think Commissioner Markowski has a good idea, and I'd rather see us explore that, even knowing our staff are stretched, than just leave things as they are and be here right again with all the same arguments and all the same issues and even less money six months from now.
So who we, would we be negotiating with, then? Is that the agency you were speaking about, Commissioner Markowski?
Well, at this point, it is a company, and I think should we pursue negotiations, I am willing certainly to put forward whatever time I can in assisting. And I think if we have something to offer, we may in fact get more partners. I know we've, we've discussed it in the past, but I don't know that we included for-profit companies in that discussion. And if we are business friendly, I think that when a business does a good job of what it has started, that we should be willing to work with that business and not only focus on, on the charitable organizations, which, you know, in addition do great work, but if someone has done something well, then I think they are the ones that should be doing it, and we shouldn't try to duplicate what they have in place. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Chief Manager?
If you don't mind, just a couple of things. The programs that were mentioned earlier, particularly regarding the leisure services, were with nonprofits for the, for the most, most part. And we have had public-private partnerships as well. I think that if the staff is going to move in some direction that the city commission guides us, a couple of things that I think would be helpful is, there was one company that was mentioned, but there are others.
Right.
And I think that, that needs to be considered, that if, you know, there's probably a likelihood that if there is money that is going to be put on the table to be provided to companies to provide a certain service, there's probably more than one company that would like to have an opportunity. And so I, I think that's something you should consider, and then I think you also need to consider how much money you're willing to provide to a private entity to assist. And I think that's going to partially be determined by the type of service certainly that they, they provide. But I would guess that you're going to want to provide a lesser amount than what you currently spend. Otherwise, we could continue the, the current program.
And I wouldn't frankly be making the suggestion if I didn't make the assumption that we could have that partnership at a lesser expense. So I, I would support the idea...
At what, though?
Well, frankly, I, I think that if a, if a company is already in business, already providing similar services, their costs are not going to be what our costs are. They don't have to necessarily hire much more staff. They may, but they may not have the business currently, and they could use that business to supplement what they already have. In addition, they're already paying insurance. They already have vehicles. They already have administration. So I propose that we would create an RFP and, and see what type of funding it would require for them to expand their services at a lower rate within the city of Muskegon for our residents.
I also have to, we'd also have to understand that, you know, maybe that wouldn't work out depending on...
And I, I understand it's a possibility.
And, and where's that money going to come from? You know? Because right now, out of, you know, general operating funds or... Because right now, out of, you know, general operating funds or do we look in other areas which are already taking hits, like, you know, community block development grants where, you know, at least half of the funding used to come from, you know, for this program, stuff like that? Those are the type of, you know, directives. We're still talking about pots of money, if you put it in that term, which are shrinking precipitously.
And I, just like everyone else, I don't like debt. I understand that it is troublesome and it creates problems down the road. I think if we have the opportunity to have less debt than more, then we are better off than we were. So I would suggest that we would be working with the same pot of money we are now, that we were previously pulling senior transit from. If you think that that is not possible, please let me know. But that's where I would start at this point. And I would also suggest that when we go through our strategic planning session, that we take a look at how we divide our services and where we should place those budgets. As I've mentioned, I'm not sure that we should have specific pots of money towards one particular service, but that if we provide any type of grant programming, that those should be under an umbrella. And so that as these things come up, we can determine how much funding we have available towards them.
Which we do under like CBD, CB, community block development grants, which is probably the only pot that we grant out of, so. But we have a motion to deal with at this point.
Those are good ideas and that we can actually work with. And it seems that when we talk about this, we get a little abstract. And I think we need to stay on task and look at that these senior citizens are coming to the city commission meeting here, and they're looking for help. And they want results. So I'm looking at, this is a now situation, and now that we do have the funding to extend this or support this for, you know, a half a year, June 2013, I would support that motion. We talked about the budget last year that we talked about, and one of my main questions was, in this budget, will there be any cuts in the departments here? Would anyone lose their jobs? That answer was no. Okay, look what happened. Okay, we have inspectors that now had lost their job, and from my understanding, it's privatized. So there's no guarantee, but we do have a situation here now that we can vote on. And with those services that we talked about or that ideal, we can work toward that for 2013. And hopefully, by that time, we have something in place. But in the meantime, these seniors will have the services that they need to get back and forth, you know, to the doctors and to go buy groceries or whatever appointments that they have. So I think we need to pursue and look at what's on the floor right now. The motion on the floor is to support, and I encourage, you know, you all to look at this, and sometimes you have to cut against the grain. You know, sometimes you have to, regardless of what the situation looks like, you know, money's going to be spent somehow. And we're in the middle of a litigation right now possibly. So that money's going to go somewhere. Why not help our seniors?
Yeah. Yeah. Or wait for a full commission to vote.
Exactly.
I do have a question, and that would be, there is also, I believe, the option for providing to amend his motion, which would be to direct staff towards an alternative solution for June. Because so far, my understanding from the motion is that he's suggesting that we put the funding forward and that we'll see what happens in June. And I don't necessarily think that's the prudent approach either, because it seems as though we're hoping that by June, we'll just come to the same sentiment. And I think that that prevents us from really focusing on what our budget numbers should be. So, you know, there would be the option of also amending that motion to include focusing on alternatives.
Vice Mayor.
Certainly, that could be made as a motion if this passes or fails as well. Commissioner German, I don't normally address individuals directly on the commission like this, but you've said this a number of times tonight. We know what the money is coming from. We have a limited amount of money in our budget stabilization fund or in our rainy day fund. So this is not being cut from another program. This is coming out of that finite savings account. When it's gone, it's gone. And the rain is coming. We can see the squall line. It's here. We're already getting wet. So what we're talking about is, in essence, taking money out of that account for this. So it won't be available to pay for the lawyers for the lawsuit that we just are now engaged. It's not going to be available to maintain our police force next year. It's not available. We're spending it on this. And so this is not coming out of revenue. If we say no to this motion, that doesn't suddenly free up money. It means we're not taking money that we don't have and spending it on something. And, you know, I hear a lot of folks out there commenting, and I try to show as much respect to the folks who are in the audience as possible, because you took time out of your day to get here. Some of you might have had trouble getting here, because I know senior transit doesn't operate at this time of night. The fact is, is that oftentimes, when I hear seniors come up and talk to the city commission, it's explained to me in very real terms that I understand that as a senior citizen, you're on a fixed income. The city's not on a fixed income. The city's on a shrinking income. We don't have as much money this year as we did last year. We don't have as much money as we did last year, as the year before, or the year before that, or the year before that. And that's not me making things up. That's available to anybody who wants to go to clerk's office and pick up our year-to-year audits, or look on our website where all those audits are available. That's just the harsh reality. And I'm sorry that people don't want to believe that. But that's just the way it is. And we can see around us in places like Benton Harbor and the Muskegon Heights Public Schools, and Highland Park, and E Course, and other communities around this state where people in our positions didn't look you in the eye and say, "I'm sorry, this is something, there's not money to do anymore." Thank you, Ron.
Commissioner.
I'm, you know, I'm not going to go on forever, but another part of my thinking, and this is something I've tried to bring with me as I was appointed, and I was not elected, and I understand that that, you know, is something that people might feel that, you know, they didn't choose for me to be up here. But my perspective has been that I'm trying to look at every problem that is thrown up here as an opportunity. And I think that having to choose another option gives us the opportunity to create partners, because I think that every senior in Muskegon County should have the same opportunities that we're trying to get for our city residents. And I think that this gives us the option to create something that we can work with our neighboring communities on and create a better solution in the long run.
Good point. I just, I want to remind commissioners as well, though, when this was slated for cancellation of the program, we went through and made contact with alternate agencies. And of course, the main concern that was cited by individuals that have come up with your testimonials is that they were not as convenient. We did not leave people hanging. We said, "Here are the alternatives, and they are available." The main issue was, "It's not as convenient." The other main issue was that we were so convenient due to the fact that by their own testimonials, we find that our employees were working outside of work rules and doing more than what they were supposed to be doing, opening us to, you know, and the citizens to potential liability. But remember, we didn't just do this and leave people hanging. All right? Anyway, we have a motion on the floor. I have three...
Excuse me, can I speak before you vote on it?
I was just getting that, Ms. Fish. I have three individuals I will allow to address as they put in their request to speak. You are each held to three minutes. Please keep your comments specifically to the transportation issue. And if an individual touches on the same points and you think they have been expressed, then perhaps you consider that you have had your point made as well. But Ms. Fish, if you would please come up, give your name and address, and you have three minutes to address the commission.
I may need a little bit more time. My name is Ann Fish. I live at 1213 Westdale Avenue, apartment one. I own my house. And what I heard that went on in your work meeting horrified me, because the lack of respect, empathy, and sympathy for those of us who have worked so hard all our lives. And I know what hard work is. I milked a herd of cows every day from the time I was 11, 4:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon, picked tomatoes in 100-degree weather. I was not raised with riches. And I'm on a limited income now, a lot of which goes to help other people. And I do have multiple handicaps. And I challenge any of you to have 29 needles put into your eyes. And when I get them, I get one in each eye, and my eyes are numbed and dilated. And you say that the senior transit drivers are doing more than they should do. They're doing the right thing by coming in and getting me out of there, because I cannot see my hand in front of my face. They're doing the right thing in getting me into my house safely, so that I don't fall down my basement steps. They are not doing more than they should. They're doing what they need to do to keep us safe. And I think it's very bad. I came up in a very hard life. I've worked hard all my life. My mother was a full-blooded Semite, and my father was a full-blooded Aryan, and, which is a weird, really weird combination. And when half of her family was exterminated by Hitler, she went insane and was on, became a drug addict. And living with a drug addict, you never know where the other, when the other shoe's going to fly. And after I milked the cows, I would have to take her tray up to her before I got breakfast for my brother and me, and packed our lunches, and I'd have to take a tray up to her so she could put her feet on the floor.
Ms. Fish?
Yes.
You have one minute, and I have to draw you back specifically to the transportation, please.
Well, I know that there are other seniors who have gone through some tragic living. And there are more coming. You are among them. If you don't have any family living near you, and you become incapacitated, unable to drive, unable to see to put your own hearing aid batteries in, unable to see the labels on the food in the grocery stores, the food that you need to eat to survive. And I have been fighting, you say, "Oh, go to assisted living." I am fighting for my dignity and my independence, as are many of us who are older. We need this dignity. We need this independence.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fish, I'm going to have to thank you at this point for your statements. We do have, in the interest of allowing the other individuals time to speak as well, and we've appreciated your sharing with us on the last two occasions that you joined us. But I'm going to call up other individuals at this point.
I'm still astounded that there are two empty chairs there.
Can I make a quick point while we're waiting for our next speaker?
Ann.
When I was making phone calls regarding options, I did not get through all of them. But one of them that I made was to a program just down the street, and it's called Senior Companions. And it is not a home health service where someone comes and lives with you or is there all the time, but it is specifically for people who are in your position. It's a service that's provided free of charge, and it's someone who is able to come and assist you with simple things like grocery shopping, or when you maybe just need some help around the house and need someone to support you. You've mentioned that you don't have family available to you. So I just wanted to let you know that there are some local programs that will fit more of the needs than the program that we currently offer. So I'm suggesting that you contact them, and I'm happy to provide you with their phone number, but that service is available to you free of charge, and it's just down the street.
Thank you. Mr. David Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is David Kurtz. I reside at 3640 Fulton. I've witnessed many of these meetings, and one of the things that struck me at the last commission meeting is what Commissioner Turnquist said, "Simply do the right thing." I'm in support of Muskegon seniors. They want their transit to continue. This is a diverse group, but before I provide some of my comments, I also must say that I'm a senior transit driver. I do have an interest, obviously, to protect my part-time job as of the other four people who work in senior transit. We're being kicked to the curb, and that's certainly not mentioned. But that's not the important part. The important part, I'll survive this. These seniors won't. I like to read an excerpt from an editorial I read on, a couple excerpts from editorials I read on Sunday in the Muskegon Chronicle. And it kind of gets to the issue. In bold print, it simply said, "City officials need to follow voters." This editorial intelligently speaks to the issue. A few more comments regarding that. "The people of Muskegon clearly wanted senior citizen transit to receive funding." I continue, "Muskegon City Commission should listen to the intent of the voters and act accordingly." They continue, "We urge commissioners to adopt a compromise proposed by Byron Turnquist to continue until June 30th." And I applaud him, and you as well, Mr. German. The Chronicle continued, and the last quote from the Chronicle is, "Voters in November clearly were willing to pay extra taxes to maintain the program while the legal issues are at hand." I must briefly touch on proposal two and three. You've heard it over and over again. Clearly, two passed with 6,278 votes. Four, proposal three, of those 6,278 votes, 3,576 voted against it. They clearly didn't understand it. And to criticize the voters for not understanding is absurd. You know, I could go into some other things, but democracy is sacred. Our right to vote is sacred. We hold voting in the highest esteem. We are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. I should again say, "For the people." I plead with this commission to honor the request of the voters and find a way to do this. I'm also more than happy to work with any of the staff members in my free time to try to come up with a compromise. But we need time. It needs to be extended. We need to go along with what Mr. Turnquist says. I'll devote my time to help find a solution to this, but nobody to this day has really done much, because we don't have any answers. Let's work at that. Let's work at this. Let's help these people. And in closing, I would like to thank Mr. Turnquist again. You people need to do the right thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. And last one, Janet Nelson, please.
My name is Janet Nelson, and I live at 973 West Larch Avenue. First of all, Mr. German, thank you as a senior citizen. Mr. Turnquist, thank you as a senior citizen. And Leah, you were mentioning to the rest of the council about getting involved with another group, a private group that would, where you could get the funding, and it wouldn't cost us as much to ride. Before all this mess ever started, we were paying $3 round trip, which is a buck and a half one-way. Then, when we found out, and it was at, I'd say, the commission meeting down here that I happened to attend, that it was going to go up to $2 round trip, and it ended up going around to $3, or, or no, $3 one-way, so it's $6 round trip. That's what I pay right now every time I use the senior transit service. That does not include my $20 a month bus pass that I also buy and I also use. And Mr. Spataro, yes, I am. I'm on a limited budget, which you, like you, you're on a limited funding budget. Only mine, just like yours, is going down the tubes every frickin' month, because prices for food are going up, my healthcare costs are going up, now my senior transit's gone up, and the bus now, which used, which I used to be able to buy a month bus pass for five or six bucks, is now costing me 20. So I have to learn how. I have to budget my money. And to help with the senior transit, the senior transit is the one that told us, and this has been going on since June, I have been paying $6 every time I get into the senior transit.
You have one minute, Ms. Nelson.
Um, I don't know what I'm going to do without senior transit, except ride the bus and take my chances on getting hit crossing four lanes of a road. I can't go to my dentist, because the bus doesn't go out that way. It doesn't go that far. And if it does, I still take the chance, running across the street and getting hit on four lanes of traffic. I don't want to take that risk, but I'm not going to have any choice, because I can't afford the so-called cheap bumblebee service for a buck and a quarter, or a buck fifteen, when you put one cheetah in. And I can't afford Port City Cab, because the last time I checked that out, that was close to $5, bingo the minute you get in it. I mean, there's nothing, if you could get something from out there and bring it into here. And by the way, Leah, senior transit, now like I have to go away tomorrow, so I called them at 8:00 this morning for an appointment for tomorrow.
Ms. Nelson, I have to have you wrap up.
So I just wanted you to know that there's at least a day, day in advance notice. That's all you have to give senior transit to get picked up on. So on that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out to people out in the audience, regardless of how this vote goes, that if, like me, your medical appointments are scheduled in advance, and most of them are, there are several services that cover the city of Muskegon that do provide free or limited-cost transit for medical appointments. And that requires advance notice, but again, most people don't have an emergency trip to the dentist. That may come up once in a while. Normally, these kinds of things are scheduled in advance, and there's ample opportunity to meet the advance notice requirements for those services. So regardless of what happens with senior transit, there are services for what has been described by two of the three individuals indicating access to medical appointments that is available, and in some cases would be, well, the ones that are free of charge, obviously, would be less expensive than what you're paying for senior transit right now.
And we did make those options available last spring or beginning of the summer, when we had sent out notification to all our users at that time. Commissioners, we have a motion before us. If there's no more comment or discussion, then I'll ask for the roll call.
I'd just like to say one other thing.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Thank you for your comments and your concerns. I just want to say, I respect the fact that these senior citizens came out and exercised their right to vote to get this service. I mean, the law of binding citizens and taxpayers, I say, they deserve help like we've helped other businesses and entities. Maybe just a temporary time span of six months until something is put in place. And again, I'd just like to reiterate, I'd just like to urge the commissioners to look at this. And to me, you know, and this is just my philosophy on this, you know, it seems like we're playing politics, you know? And I'm just be blunt about it. I mean, it may not be the popular vote to do right now, but it's the moral and the right thing to do. So I think by going ahead and supporting this motion and passing this vote so these seniors can have this service would be a great benefit to the city of Muskegon seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roll call, please.
Mayor Colrun?
No.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
No.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
No.
Motion fails.
If you make a motion to request staff to draft a request for proposals, I'm supporting that.
I would like to make a motion that we request staff to draft a request for proposal, requesting services such as provided by senior transit for a projected users of 150 to 175 to a similar cost as what is being provided currently for round-trip prices within the city of Muskegon.
I'll second that motion.
It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski and seconded by the vice mayor to have staff put out a request for proposals for a comparable senior transit program reflective of our current costs. Is that, is that right?
Or similar to.
Or similar to.
Cost to the riders.
Right, cost to the riders.
Cost to the rider. And servicing.
Within the city of Muskegon.
Within the city of Muskegon. Any discussion or comments?
I do just want to add to that, that I make that motion because there was a vote, and a majority of people who wanted to support funding. And we are certainly.